Okay, it's 7:06, we're going to call this meeting to order. On behalf of council, I'd like to wish everyone in the gallery and all the residents of Richmond County a happy new year, and to staff as well. And everyone sees a new face here this evening. I'd like to welcome Kent McIntyre. He's our new CAO for the municipality. Congratulations Kent.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll continue on the agenda with item two, which is items added. Are there any items to be added by unanimous consent? I have one, and it's a grant application for South Mountain Armagh Goal Community Association. It's in the amount of $5.68, and it's between two districts, District Three and Four. That's yours as well Gilbert. Have you unanimous consent to add that? Okay, so we'll add that. Any others? Okay, we'll need a motion to approve the agenda with the two items added by email. And the item this evening's been moved by councillor Martell. Is there a seconder? It's been seconded by councillor Boucher on discussion. Questions called, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Onto item three on the agenda, which is review of the minutes of December the 11th, 2017. Is any errors or omissions? Need a motion to approve the minutes? It's been moved by councillor Boucher that the minutes of December the 12th, 2017, you approve, there's a seconder? Seconded by councillor Martell on discussion. Questions called, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Onto presentations. This evening we have two presentations, and I guess they're going to be done in the order they are. There's Food for Children Society, and that's Paul Wall. He's the president of this society, and it's a funding request. Just hit the red, the right-hand side of your mic, okay. You can state your name for the record.
Paul Wall. I'm president of Food for Children Society, and I've come here to make a presentation today on behalf of child poverty in our island here. I'm here to support it. I'd like to thank you all for starters for welcoming me here today. And I'm here with some of my board members, and we'll just flip to the next one, and some of the volunteers. We are a registered charity with our CRA number. We're registered as a food bank, and we've, because we do operate a food bank in a different way, we have changed it where we help children to pantries. It's not as an offensive word, so we're a food bank, and we keep our food banks inside the schools. We're in all schools. Food banks today are serving same people over and over, and we're not getting to children in poverty. There's a select few that we're really getting to. We are in the schools where children spend all day, and we purchase lunch and snacks, and the economy doesn't really allow for children to be purchasing their food at school. It's expensive for them to eat this way. And from my own investigation, most food banks around here serve 80 to 100 individuals, and we've been catering to about 2,500 children daily in seven schools in this Richmond County and three in the Port Hoxbury area, including Mulgrave. What I've created here is a paradigm shift in food banks, where people usually come to the food bank, collect the food, and this is another way we're doing it. It's a time when the usual or accepted way of doing or thinking about something changes. That's the definition of a paradigm shift. And it's important when that change happens, when the usual way of thinking or doing something is replaced by a newer, different way. And Food for Children is doing it in a new and a different way to try and just address our children directly with child poverty in the school environment. Eliminating child poverty, addressing food insecurities with nutrition to enhance children's education at school and at home. Therefore, it's empowering our children, our families, and our community, and planting the seeds of growth. No child goes without. Our present food banks are catering to our elderly and not as many families, but we cater directly to the children at school. Our child poverty rates in Cape Breton right now are ranging from 38% to 75% in some areas, and this is the statistics which you'll be able to find on our Facebook page, which have been posted by various survey groups and so on, that you'll be able to find more details in our Facebook page. We've started an apple a day fundraising campaign, and we're using this apple a day to create funding and supply apples to our children. We've just worked out a deal with Scotiagold apples, and they're sending their first shipment of 2,500 apples to our region within the next few days. This will be distributed to all of the schools in Richmond County, so that every child gets to eat fresh fruit. This is a typical, one of the things of what we do, we keep food banks inside of the schools, so that each week we pack a backpack. The children are identified through guidance counselors, principals, teachers, and then those individuals speak to the parents and ask them if there's a need for food at home. When the parents agree, we privately pack the backpack, and the picture on the left shows what goes into a typical backpack. We put bread in there, canned meat for to make sandwiches, bananas, apples, oranges. There's usually potatoes and carrots in there. And plus, we've also merged up with Schools Plus, who puts recipes inside of the backpacks, so that they help them, direct them to how to cook the meals. This here is a testimonial letter from Schools Plus, and it's hard to read there. Is there a way we can enlarge it? But it says that they support Food for Children, and the efforts, it says on here that we service about 150 children and their families. It's the third paragraph down. That's just on the Schools Plus end of things, if people here are familiar with Schools Plus, which is an independent government agency that works in the school to take care of... What they're doing is trying to turn the school into the hub of the community. Hit the next one. That this, the vision for Schools Plus is that schools become the hub of the community, a convenient place for services to be delivered to families. And if you could read, I'm sorry it's so not legible, but down on the left-hand column it says that they offer social work, health, justice, and various other services to children in the schools. And now we've partnered with them, and they are handling the food bank end of things, the food pantries in the schools. This is a letter from East Richmond Education Center, which the principal describes that, you know, "To provide a quality education for our students, nutrition is a key to help feed the mind and body. Positive behavior is also a key component of a well-fed child." So this is just another testimonial for the next one. This is Richmond Education Center. They mention in there that there's 450 students from grade five to 12, and they have certain times where the children have enough money to buy food at the cafeteria, or if they do buy food, there's times where if they buy food, they don't have time or money to go and spend time with their friends or attend certain functions which they'd like to. So what Lo is saying here is that we provide students with food each week, and I'm sorry I can't read that as well, individual items to help the students who, for whatever reason, may have struggles on different days. So we've put fruit baskets into the schools to contain cereal bars, apples, oranges, and bananas, and they're free for every child all day long. There's certain rooms in the school where there's a fridge and there's a kettle. They can make porridge whenever they want, that's free. All the food we provide is free for the children. Next one please. Okay, this is Tamarack Education Center, and this was the guidance council of Margaret Gracie. Food for Children, I'm just going to scroll right down. It says, "The Food for Children Society has supported the whole school community as well by donating breakfast bars and distribute to students on days when breakfast program is not operating. The program is wonderful addition to the school community. It nourishes families and children not only with food, but also by providing comfort, stability, and self-confidence to the students who receive weekly backpacks." This is just some testimonies from the schools of how successful it is working for them. These pictures here, the one on your left is the food pantry inside of Tech Education Center in Port Hoxbury. The one on the right is from East Richmond Education Center in St. Peters. As you see, we keep a full stock of all food, even some detergents, juice boxes, potatoes, carrots, bananas, anything that you can pack into a backpack or distribute and put out in the school for the children to use on a daily basis. These here, this is, the picture on the right is just where we do some shopping, to distribute it to the schools. And the left shows a basket that's at the Colloble Pour behind us here, that's in the main office, and children can come out to that and pick in that all day long, whenever there's food there. It's free for the children. There's a lot of food insecurities in our region, and the families don't have the biggest budget in the world to supply food. And often, it's just not enough when they get there. Our children spend all day in school, so there should be more nourishment for them there, as families don't have high-paying jobs here. This is up at Tamarack. This is just another example of the baskets that are available for children. There's bananas, there's apples and oranges, and fruit cups and water. We try to supply very nutritious food. There's nothing, keep sugars out of what we find. These here are fruit cups and water. They are, what do you call them, tangerines or clementines and water kind of thing. But that's just another example. Now, in Sarek, for instance, they use the handicapped children to stock the room, to restock the baskets, and it's just another program that's operating in the school. The children are helping children. This here is at Richmond Academy. The, I think it was Scare Hunger around Halloween. These young ladies went out and they collected food to distribute into the food bank that's located inside of Richmond Academy. And if we click ahead one more, the one on the right is the food bank presently in Richmond Academy, and that was their first supply there. We only opened that one a few months ago. The one on the left is the Colloble Pour behind us here. That's, picture was taken last year, but it's been since filled and refilled and emptied and refilled several times. The Schools Plus group has taken on the duty of packing the backpacks, putting recipes from the Cape Breton Cookbook in the backpacks, and they even deliver the backpacks to the families that need them. The difference, what we do is that some of the people that go to some of the food banks, it's not a great area for children to attend. And the word "food bank" has, for some reason, become a bit offensive in the community in different areas, so people are afraid to go to a food bank. So what we've done is, in our shift of doing things, we've called them food pantries, which appears to be much more politically correct and friendly to the school environment. And this here is, Learn North has just recently donated $1,500 to us as we've been going through this apple a day fundraising program, and they've put a challenge out to businesses in Port Hoxbury, Richmond County, and Inverness to help fight child poverty. And from what I understand, we're the only charity that I know of, and I've had a lot of people check into this, that are really addressing child poverty directly. The food goes to the children and the children's families. This is a donation that was made to us from Scotiabank. This was last year, and it just goes to show that we're getting some more corporate support in trying to eliminate child poverty in Cape Breton. This was the Hunger Count survey that we did with Food Banks Canada and with Feed Nova Scotia last year, and this was done for the month of March. I sat with the principals of the schools and the people who I deal with at each school and confirmed that that many meals were going out. And what I'm calling a meal is, an apple is a meal to a child, a banana is a meal to a child, especially when they have nothing. So if you look at the bottom there, we put them out as snacks. There was 9,200 snacks put out in the month of March, and this was mostly in Richmond County. And there was 1,150 meals, we estimate it was put out in that month through the backpack programs. But if we also added on the contributions that we put in yogurt tubes and lots of other different things to the breakfast program, that would probably double. So what I figure at a minimum we put out last year was 100,000 meals to our students and children in this community. No, stay back on that one please. And up in the corner, I was saying, there's a few things there, join, give, and share. We have to sponsor our children, become part of our team, is what I'm asking the municipality today, to help break the cycle of poverty. And to give, to help our meaningful cause, to help plant seeds in our children, because we have to empower them for the future. But with food and education, that's the number one way, I believe, out of poverty. And to share, we have to speak up for children in poverty and be a powerful force for good. Find a way to show how you care. And another thing is, no child is too far for what we're doing. Some of the children that we service are 74.9 kilometers from school, and that's two to three hours on a bus. They have no other way to get to a food bank. They have no way of getting food. They're poor. And I've been to these houses, it's horrendous really. So, but through our system and the backpacks, at least this can go home on the bus. And if the children are sick at home, we can still put the backpack on the bus and it can be dropped off at their driveway. So this is another way that it's shifted from the people having to show up at the food bank as compared to it's being delivered to their home where they need it. What was the last part of that? Simply by investing more in programs that work. That's us. We're a program that's been working. We've been doing this for eight years, and this is a surprise video that I didn't know was being made, but I'd like to play it for you now.
Mr. Speaker.
Honorable member for Cape Breton, Richmond.
Mr. Speaker, I rise today to acknowledge and thank Food for Children Society, which is a registered charity that helps support students and their families by supplying healthy snacks to schools and backpacks filled with food for those who need them. The program operates out of seven schools in Cape Breton, Richmond, and was started by St. Peters resident Paul Wall. Mr. Wall identified a need in his local school and has expanded the program's coverage throughout Richmond County and Port Hoxbury, where in seven schools, students are afforded the opportunity to drop by designated areas in the schools throughout the school day to choose a nutritious snack, fresh fruit, vegetables, or granola bars. In addition, both Mr. Wall and the schools have identified the need for students to have access to food while away from the school. As a result, Food for Children provides a number of backpacks filled with food for students to take home over the weekend. I rise today to acknowledge the work of Mr. Paul Wall and his team of volunteers with Food for Children Society, as they work tirelessly to put nutritious food in the bellies of the children in Cape Breton, Richmond. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
One more slide. Is there one more slide beyond that? And now, I'm just, at the end of this, we are looking for regular monetary donations from the municipality, and we want to collaborate with the municipality to prevent and eliminate child poverty in Cape Breton. Our programs are working in the schools. They're very well-accepted in the schools. We have lots of volunteers who are helping us. Teachers and principals seem to be quite thrilled with what's going on. They're giving me comments that attendance has improved, social skills have improved, their marks have improved, overall happiness and acting out in class, as teachers are able to teach their class, because the children are jumping around because they're hungry. And we're hoping that the municipality will find some funding for us, as we are a food bank, but we're feeding children in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Paul, for the presentation, and I'd certainly like to make a statement and attest to the fact that you are a friendly and familiar face at Richmond Education Center and Academy, and Paul's efforts are ongoing. They're greatly appreciated. It's made an obvious difference in our school, so I certainly thank you for that. And just like to say that I will support some contributions to your society and moving forward, and the time that you've put in is greatly appreciated and certainly doesn't go unnoticed, so thank you for everything that you continue to do for our communities.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Boucher?
Thank you, Paul, for the presentation. I knew this was coming forward, because I know you've been at this for a long time, and it's a great cause for the children that can't afford to have any type of food, really. They're going to school hungry to start with, and I appreciate what you're doing. I would like to know what type of donation, how much financial donation do you think the county could support you with to do yearly?
Well, as much as possible, to be honest with you, because the problem is very severe. We've been operating on donations from many different grocery stores and grocery chains, but our biggest problem is buying the fresh fruit and vegetables. We're lucky enough now to get hooked up with, made a partnership with Scotiagold apples, and they want to give us a regular donation of apples, and our first donation is coming this week by Midland Transport, we're getting 2,500 apples. So that's pretty well an apple a day for every child in the community right now, but they are also willing to sell us apples at a fraction of the cost of what it would cost otherwise. We have been buying our food basically at like Foodland and the superstore and so we so, we've been paying list price for things. But now this has become so big that we do need to purchase in bulk now. I have spoke with the mayor of Port Hoxbury and a member of MLA, Atlanta Pond, about opening a warehouse so that we can control the life of the vegetables we get, the fruit we get, so we need to get a building and some refrigeration, you know, some shelf space where families are accepted in this area, where it's safer for children. It's hard to donate to a school where they have so much security in the school, so it's not like the regular food bank where you can walk up and you bring a bag to the door and anybody can do that. You can't do that with the school, because you need your criminal record check and your child abuse check to get in the door, and there's security at the door. So it's only us that seem to be able to fill that. But whatever the municipality can offer, we will certainly spend it on our local children. And I don't think there's a child in this community right now that we haven't fed in the last five or six years. There's not one, I'm sure.
I guess what I'm looking for, Paul, is I'm looking for a number that we can take to, council can take to budget deliberations and see what kind of funding we can get out of that.
I'm looking at $5,000 to $10,000 off of my head. Ford Motor Canada gave us $5,000 last year, Scotiabank $2,000, but whatever the municipality can afford, it's going right into our children's education.
We certainly understand that, Paul. It's a well-run, you have a well-run organization, and we'd be only too glad to help you out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
Paul, where do you operate out of now?
We're operating in the schools. We keep our foods in the schools. I use my home as the registered address for the corporation, but our food banks and our food is all kept inside the schools, secured inside there.
So when you get donations, you have to receive them at the school?
Pardon me?
If you get donations of food, where do they, when you receive them at your home?
Well, I usually go pick them up. I'll pick them up and bring them in the school, or my board members and volunteers who already have their clearances, they'll pick it up and bring it to the school. Foodland sells $10 bags every week. We get them every other week. Sometimes it goes to the St. Peters Food Bank, then it goes down the Lordways, and then we get them for a week. The Atlantic Superstore has fundraisers for us, and they collect food that they donate to us. Individual people will call me on the phone, I'll go pick up the food, bring it into the school, because we have to respect the security of our children, so only so many members can bring it in and out of the school.
So annually, what's the cost to operate your facility?
So far, we've been running around $10,000 to $15,000 in spending our own money, but that's...
When you say your own money, your own personal money?
No, no, the money of the corporation. We've been spending about that amount per year. But I haven't been keeping a really good track of how much food comes in in donations, because it's so quick to come in and go out. We don't have the inventory control of that yet, of how much food has actually come in the door, and then go back out. Because people come with endless amounts of food that they'll donate to me. Dundee Resort gave me lots of frozen food that we had to disperse over a day, because we didn't want it to go bad, and that was a value of about $2,000 in food. That went to 68 children and their families. You'll see that on our Facebook page. It's hard to keep track of the actual amount that people donate. That's, you almost need a person doing that 24 hours a day with a scanner, scanning it to go in, so. But most of the $10,000 to $15,000 that we spent is on fresh fruit, potatoes, carrots, vegetables that are perishables.
Okay. And so you save $15,000 a year as the financial cost to run your organization?
That's what we've been operating, we've only been in operation, I've been doing it now for nine years, but we incorporated in 2014, so that's what we've been spending approximately each year since 2014.
Are you aware we give $2,000 to food banks every year? I've never seen an ask before.
Well, I'm aware. I was involved with the St. Peters area food bank, and that kind of puzzled me, why we're a registered food bank and we have never received a donation from the municipality.
I'll be honest, I thought the breakfast program was ran by volunteers, which I guess you guys are, but volunteers in the communities. I didn't realize you guys were involved in that at all.
Well, at East Richmond Education Center, we started the breakfast program over there one day a week, I'd say about 10 years ago.
Okay.
And then we got more volunteers to get it to two days a week, and then three days a week, and then we finally got it to five days a week. But the strike that went on last year, all the schools lost their volunteers, so now the breakfast programs are a grab and go. They don't make hot toast or cereals anymore. It's just a grab and go as you walk in the door, so we've been supplying some of those foods, the grab and go for the breakfast.
And that's mainly what it is now?
Pardon me?
That's mainly what it is now, the grab and go?
Mainly a grab and go now, yeah. And with our cafeterias in the schools, there's a lot of children, and I've seen it myself, that will walk the line up, but they don't have the money to buy the food. And they're going without, and it is a lot of money if you have children yourselves here, that if you have to buy your children lunch every day, it's very expensive. And I don't think the quality of the food is the best either. So there has to be something to supplement these children when they don't have money and they're hungry at school and they can't think straight. Some of the things that have come out of it is when children in the elementary school are brought in... Some of the things that have come out of it is when children in the elementary school are brought in to the guidance office or the principal's office because they didn't do their homework. One of the first things that's done with them now is they're fed some food when they get in there. So if they're sitting there doing their homework, you know, because they didn't get it done last night, they're eating a cheese string and they're drinking a juice box and they're getting rewarded for being into the principal's office rather than scolded. So it's created a more positive mental attitude in the schools for the children. And they are healthier. They're happier to be in school. There's food there. I've asked some of the principals, what improvements are you seeing? And they're saying, as I had already said, marks have improved, social skills, attendance has improved. And I've asked Mrs. Tanya Carr, the principal of East Richmond Education Center, I said, what percentages of improvements are you seeing? And my line was 5, 10, 15%. She said, Paul, it's so far over 100%, I can't even measure it. So the teachers and staff are really seeing these improvements. And it's nice feedback to get that encourages me to keep doing it.
Maybe that's why you see so many in the principal's office. Good snacks. Counselor Martel?
Yeah, thank you very much, Paul. I'd like to say commend you for all the work you've done. I certainly would be supportive of giving something. But what I would like to see is that probably with the other municipalities that are on board that you're servicing, maybe you get together with all the municipalities together to come up with some kind of a formula that would help you guys on a regular basis. Seems to be a lot of, like you say, missing information that you don't have on what your needs are because you haven't tracked it because you're so busy doing the proper thing on a day-to-day basis. So maybe somehow we could use some Stanford resources and get in touch with other counties that are being serviced by your organization and then come up with a plan to...
Right now, our organization is just in Richmond County and the three schools in Port Hoxbury and the school in Mulgrave. I have been called by Schools Plus to service all the schools in Inverness, down as far as Highland Academy. I have set up a small food bank in the Inverness School. And what I'm trying to do with the model is let them make it self-sufficient, that they have their own food drive. The food stays in the school. If it's dispersed through the backpacks, we supplement it with the money to buy the fresh fruit, the potatoes, the carrots, porridge, things that we need every day, especially the perishables.
I would suggest, Mr. Warden, that we maybe get some staff to kind of work with other municipalities and see, and maybe work with Paul in partnership to find out exactly what we can do to help in this situation. So then we can come up with a dollar figure that would be suitable to help them move their project forward.
Want to make a motion on that, or?
Yeah. The motion is to ask staff to work with other municipalities and with Paul.
With the town, with the town of Port Hoxbury is one of them?
I have a presentation due at the town of Port Hoxbury on the 23rd of January of this month. And I'm organizing one for Inverness County soon. I also have been approached by the Community Health Board. I believe they made a presentation last week here. And when I was speaking with them today, they asked me to mention that part of their agenda is to work with child poverty and they're wanting to work with Food For Children as well. I'm going to be attending their meeting on February 6th and I may become a board member with the Community Health Board as well.
Okay. So the motion is?
Is to ask staff to work with Paul and other municipalities that are being served to come up with a plan and to come up with figures that they can bring to council with recommendations.
Would it be okay just to work with Paul for our area right now?
Sure.
Yeah, just to find out exactly what you need for our four schools. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. We ask staff, we'll get our C I O, I guess, to decide who will look after that, to work with Paul, see if they can come up with getting something concrete for some numbers for us so we can have some information, I guess, to decide what we'll give you on an annual basis if we do decide that throughout the budget process. Everyone understand that? Okay, is there a second there? Is there a second there? Second by Counselor McLean on discussion. Deputy Warden?
I'll wait till after the motion.
Okay.
I want to speak on the...
Okay.
I'll support the motion.
Any other questions or comments? Question's been called. All of its favors signified by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Deputy Warden, question for Paul?
Yes, I guess, Mr. Wall, I want to echo, I guess, the same sentiment as all the other councils. You're doing a fine job, but I have a few questions. As the warden mentioned, we spend $10,000 a year to food banks. That's what we give. And I'm wondering, is there any kind of collaborative effort on your part to deal with the food banks? Probably work together because, you know, we gave $10,000 towards food banks. And I'm sure they're geared also for families with children. I think that's our main objective. And I hope that I'm not wrong in saying this. When I donate $2,000 to a local food bank, I would assume it's for families with kids. I don't intend to give it so that somebody can just go there and, you know, just get food anytime they want to and it's not done to provide to the kids that they have in their household. I'm just wondering what kind of efforts have you made to work with the food bank?
I have visited all the food banks. I'm in touch with them. There's Paul Boudreaux down here at the Armadale Food Bank. And I've spoke with Mary and I've helped reestablish the St. Peters Area Food Bank. And what I find with these food banks is they're serving the same individuals continuously. For the last seven years here, it's the same group. A lot of the, I'm not trying to be brash here or ignorant, but it just seems to be the same people and a lot of elderly, a lot of people who are enabled through drug and alcohol addiction. And they use the food bank to supplement their habits. That's happening a lot. And because of this particular type of clientele that's showing up at the food banks, families are reluctant to take their children to that area. Just they don't want to have their children see somebody who's inebriated as an example and idolize that. When dealing with the Early Childhood Intervention Center up in Port Hoxbury, they explained to me that when they go and access food at the food bank, they sometimes have to wait three to four hours to collect a bag to go and bring it to the families they need. So what I've done is changed it, is I've put the food banks in the school where it's not embarrassing. And I don't even like using the word food bank because that's almost an ancient word. But we're not reaching the children in poverty here. A lot of people are too embarrassed to go to a food bank.
Okay, so what I understand is food for children means children that are in need.
But we also take care of our children at the same time because no child is going without. If a child shows up today without his lunch because mom or dad couldn't put it together or they don't like their lunch because they've ate the same thing all week, there is something to supplement them at the school.
Okay, so it's not necessarily food for the needy children, it's food for children?
Food for children.
Regardless of their needs or whatever, nobody monitors whether or not...
Well, yeah, the principals and guidance monitor their needs and we do check ourselves as well to make sure these are needy individuals that need the food, yes. We have outreach workers. We have, for starters, Schools Plus who are outreach workers that identify these as well. I'm not fully involved with Schools Plus, but I know that they do reach out to children in needs. They offer lots of different services.
See, what I'm looking at is that whatever you give to a food bank, that should, with your work that you're involved in, should lessen the, should provide a lesser burden on the local food banks. I mean, if you provide that in the schools, it should lessen the amount that the local food banks require in order to provide their services.
See, we're not dealing with the same population because the people that I deal with or the Food For Children Society deals with, they don't go to the regular food banks. In St. Peters area, for instance, there's only one family that goes to the food bank. The rest of the other families we deal with don't go to the local food bank.
Okay, one last question, I guess. School boards are an independent government body. They've been approached to donate any kind of money towards this program?
Well, the school board put on We Day for us last May. And it was through the school board, Straight Richmond School Board and a partnership with Ford Motor Canada. And anybody who came in to do a test drive on that day, we got $20 for each test drive. So the school board is supporting us. And through that initiative, we got $5,300. And that came from Ford Motor Canada.
But you don't go to local school boards the same as you go to municipalities and make a presentation?
Well, I'm working on that now. For the first while, I was on the ground doing, packing the backpacks and making sure the food got out there. Now we have more members, we have more volunteers, and I'm trying to spend my time now to isolate and work with the municipality here, Ford Motor Canada, Scotiabank, New Page, I believe it is, Learn North was the name. So what I'm doing now is trying to raise the money to support the system because I have lots of support staff now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much as well.
So Paul, you're getting more than one or two donations. Do you have an idea what you're getting annually? Like the $15,000 you spend is all donations, you're saying?
All donations.
And that's, but you don't keep track if you're giving charitable receipts?
Oh, yes, I have an accountant who has...
Okay, so you do have some information we can get?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
I have V E C Tax Pro in St. Peters that does our books and does our income tax. And they do our monthly books of what we spend.
Okay, so you do have some information. I think Counselor Martel was alluding to getting some of that.
Well, we have to keep that up to date. We have to maintain that C R A number, you know. And if you don't deal with the books properly, if that's not done right, then you really have nothing.
So, let me get this straight. I had the impression that you were helping all kids. So you weren't stigmatizing the kids that are needy. What is it? Are you doing all or are you selecting the needy ones?
Well, you know, it's pretty hard to leave a child out. The backpack program, for instance, is for special families that request that food to be going home.
So those backpacks get done at the school or you do them at your home and at the school they get done?
They're done in the school, shipped from the school. The food pantry is in the school. Eddie Cobbleport here, for instance, it's all done by Mandy Quigley and Annette Keel. They pack the backpacks and they deliver them around the island here to the families that need them.
And they work for the help board?
They work for Schools Plus.
Schools Plus, okay.
And we also have Schools Plus in Richmond Academy, Kayla Landry and Janelle McDonnell. They're doing that as well. School principals are helping a lot. Tanya Sampson at Felix Marshon. Sometimes they'll even deliver the bags themselves depending on how needy the family is and what condition the family is when they come in.
So the bag gets delivered on a weekend?
On a weekday.
On a weekday?
Every week, yes. We try and put them together on Wednesday because sometimes a child will be sick. And, you know, if you make it on a Friday and there's something in the bag that's perishable, by the time Monday comes, if they don't pick up the bag, if it doesn't get delivered, sometimes the milk will go sour or, you know, orange. So we try to do it on a Tuesday or a Wednesday. So it gives enough days for the child to take it home. For younger children, the parents will come and pick it up because it's too heavy to carry for some of the children.
That's pretty good. You guys do. Good information for sure. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Paul, for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
And we'll be in touch.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, you can leave that one on, Paul.
Okay, thank you very much for having me today. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. Moving on to our next presentation, Point Tupper Committee. Jeff Stanley, I guess, will be doing a presentation, dating us on the branding and signage of which we put some money into. Or you want it.
Okay. Hello, council. New C I O. Welcome and guests. My name is Jeff Stanley with the Cape Breton Partnership. This is Carla Arsenal, the COO of the Cape Breton Partnership. We are here to give you an update on the Point Tupper Heavy Industrial Park. We were here several months ago and Point Tupper was determined to be a high priority for council. And so anyway, we just wanted to give a little bit of an update on what we've done in the, in the process. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the committee, give you a little bit of an overview on Point Tupper, talk about the branding refresh and signage, which was part of the R F P, and just a little summary. So when we left here, we decided that we would put together a steering committee, a development committee for Point Tupper. We tried to establish a balanced approach where we had a balance between industry members and government. Mark Dubay from Port Hoxbury Paper is on it, Brian Bonner from Straight Supplies, Mark Cooper from Tupper Industrial Developments, and David Hart from New Star, Dean Hart, Bearhead L N G, Brian Marshon, and the C I O from the municipality of Richmond. And I should just say a special thank you to Louis, who was very instrumental in a couple of the initiatives along with the warden, Brian Marshon. So I'll speak a little bit about that as we move forward in some of the slides. Karen Malcolm from Akoa, Wanda McLean from N S B I, and then Carla Arsenal, myself, and Helen Camo from A W Lyle Cranes. So this committee has come together to really assist moving Point Tupper forward. I think this council, along with our industry members, certainly have agreed that Point Tupper has a huge opportunity, probably one of the biggest bang for the bucks, not only from a tax perspective, but from just an economic driver in Point Tupper. Point Tupper is an internationally known industrial park. We have some great existing, a great existing customer base with a lot of potential, special in the L N G and the gas opportunities. Point Tupper employs approximately 500 people. They support another 500-plus contract employees. They contribute close to $1.7 million annually in direct taxes. There's a potential new L N G opportunity which could really stand to almost double the tax opportunity. We have rail, deep water, ice-free, quality potable water, fiber optics, natural gas. And we are on the great circle as far as strategic shipping.
I'll talk to this slide since I threw this one in today. So what we wanted to show you here is essentially if you drive into Point Tupper, and I'm sure any of you who've been there, this is what you'll see. So this photograph on the left-hand side is the old branding, the old signage that was done a number of years back. And, you know, it's fine. It served its purpose. But I think everybody felt that it's time for a refresh and that's really what we're here to talk to you about today. The green sign in the center is a bit complicated to look at. And we'll talk to the third one later on in the presentation. But I just wanted you to see, if you drove into Point Tupper today, this is what we welcome you.
As a reminder, a couple of years ago, we were going through an investment readiness project with the Cape Breton Partnership and the municipality. And we had an organization... And we had um an organization, uh the McSweeney Group actually come in and do a mock um a mock visit as if they were a uh a real company coming here looking for look looking to um purchase some property. So what they did is they came up with a criteria, they sent it to the municipality and away we went. They did that with all the 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 four municipalities. And um the bottom line was is that we all failed. Um the mock the mock example. Um we just didn't have our ducks in a row in order to be able to pull this off. And that was a combination of having um the proper information at hand. Even just the tour, the way that the park looks. So some of these recommend, there were some recommendations that came from the McSweeney Group. And some of some of uh the investment readiness uh opportunities for us was really to clean the place up and make it look like we are open for business. And so what we're doing is is a follow-up to uh to that whole report. When we went to do the uh put the R F P out, the committee decided that it might be time to do a brand refresh. We were just gonna do signage. But we thought, well, let's go back to the designers and get a few ideas and what we're uh what might help just to give Point Tupper a a new look. And then once that was that brand was determined, then we would roll that out in terms of signage and some collateral marketing uh opportunity. This was a an initiative through the Cape Britain Partnership and we had, it was close to a twenty thousand dollar um uh initiative. And we had basically equal partners on this financially from the municipality, Akoa, N S B I and the Cape Britain Partnership. So this is the brand that um we were working with Vibe and we have um gone around the committee back and forth. And this was the new brand that the committee had agreed uh to go with. And part of our visit here today uh was really a message from the committee and really out of courtesy is to ask council for their approval of this brand. The the brand really started with this T. So so Point Tupper, we wanted the name to be able to stand on its i- its own two feet. Uh internationally and uh sometimes depending on how you would use this brand. There's different elements of this brand that you can use individually. I'll show you a couple of examples. But the T um for Tupper uh is stylized in the sense that it somewhat looks like an arrow, which implies that it's moving forward. It also um has the implication that it could be a a building, a commercial or industrial building. So was there anything else on that?
Yeah, uh well, not on the T, but on the heavy. For example, you notice that the font is weighted a little, just a little bit thicker in the word heavy than it is in industrial park. The colors, that blue is more of that aquamarine blue because it's the support, the port and the significance around that. And black, obviously. Um so yeah, those are the two, really the main. But the the committee felt very strongly um about the brand and and really is looking for the support of council to move forward with it. And as Jeff said, you can modify it and use it in different ways. There's a few examples where you might wanna throw, for example, a Canadian flag attached to that, depending on where that brand would be viewed. If you're looking at it in Point Tupper, then you obviously know you're in Canada. You wouldn't need that. But if it was, for example, in a on a magazine that was going to be showcased at an airport, then you may wanna see that ad in the paper to signifying that it is Nova Scotia in Canada, right, for example?
Yes, um some of the committee members really felt that the word um Nova Scotia has a lot of brand equity. So uh in different applications, we would have Nova Scotia attached to it. There was quite a bit of debate over the word heavy. Some people felt that uh we should maybe just drop the word heavy and just have it Point Tupper Industrial Park. But in the end, we felt that there's not a lot, it it it's getting more difficult down through the Eastern Seaboard to find industrial parks and municipalities and councils that embrace heavy industry. And it's it could be one of the uh the keys to uh to Point Tupper. I think the other thing that it um that we decided is that the word heavy has been in this industrial park for years and years. And so we felt that in order to pull it out, there had to be a real compelling reason to pull it out. For the most part, the our participating committee members and and our industry members are really glad to have the word heavy in there. What we felt though is that when we do some advertising, uh we will make sure that people uh know that we are acceptable to both light and heavy. But we're just gonna keep going with the word heavy industrial park. So here's the T by itself that could be used on a that could be used on on the door. They they showed an example, for example, uh going into Port Hoxbury Paper. You know, you'd have the Port Hoxbury Paper logo as you go in, but you might see this here on the door just to let people know that you're in part of the uh industrial park group. Different applications for it. Uh this is what it might look like on a sign. Again, here we have the word Nova Scotia, uh just because it does have some brand equity. You'll notice that there's an eight hundred number, so um uh for now, the Cape Britain Partnership um can be that person behind the voice, that company behind the voice if somebody calls. You know, that's the, it's kind of that next phase is that when, as we go out and market this and the phone starts to ring, we have to make sure that we have this lead protocol in place. And and um there's been some discussions. Actually, there's been quite a bit of work done on that as well. Just so that lead is handled um properly and handled here for uh this part of Cape Britain. If the lead is gonna be generated from Point Tupper, we wanna make sure that that lead stays here. These uh smaller signs, the municipality owns close to a dozen smaller properties in Point Tupper. There's also some larger pieces of property that are owned by Nova Scotia Business Inc. And so uh the plan is for us to uh install some of these smaller, these these signs here would be approximately four feet by four feet. And we would um uh install those. Uh so when we're showing people the property, you pretty much have a a good idea what properties are for sale. Right now, when we did the mock exercise, we knew there was a block of land that was owned by the municipality, but we didn't know exactly which one. So with this here, we're gonna have some collateral material. An example of the collateral material would be a website, maybe a brochure that would actually show where the lot lines are and what properties are for sale. That way, we don't have to be going through all our different signs and putting sold stickers on them or or new names on them. We can do that all on the website where it's just easier to change.
So this this here is a mock-up of a website. So Ben, who is sitting here with us today from the partnership, Ben McNeil, has put this together. Just an illustration of what a site could look like for Point Tupper. It is not approved in Edstone Stone, but it is certainly um something that we've been looking at, taking the brand that we've just gone through. And this is and to give you an idea of what the website could look like. And what we have is, so in addition to having some very basic content about Point Tupper. When you click on this, it will take you right into the Cape Britain Partnership's land asset database. And that is can be bookmarked, that it, well, it is bookmarked now, that it will go direct, you can choose and go directly into the park. And it'll pull up each of the individual. You can see the various sites that are available for sale. The ones that we've got in there now are actually only the private sites that are owned by Tupper Developments, but we're working with N S B I and the municipality to get the other pieces of land that are available um in there, in that database. So this would be sort of the landing page that you arrive at and I and I can't recall if it's pointupper.ca. I'm not sure what what the what the address is gonna look like. But again, once you click on it, it'll take you right into our database, which is already in place, already in use. And all of the specific information that you need for the property would be there.
In addition to some of these land available uh signs that we just showed you, these four by fours. There's going to be, when you come up to the corner of um where you would turn right to go to uh Port Hoxbury Paper or Straight Supplies. We will have a welcome sign there with our new brand on it. If you go further up, probably on the other side of the driveway where Tupper Developments is, we will have a five by ten uh sign that actually is a bit of a wayward um sign that shows some of the branding, but also be able to to show some wayfinding opportunities on where to, how to get to some of these other businesses. The businesses will actually be on the sign. Uh it will show Landry Lake, it will show some of the key assets, it will show um the natural gas pipeline. So when if people are coming through, they're gonna be able to, it's it's really gonna help with the brand identity, but also help people um uh get around the park. And so we're gonna have two of those larger signs, one closer to where Straight Supplies is on the way up to um uh Port Hoxbury Paper and then one on the way to New Star as well. We just received a a uh I guess our last um iteration of of that um of that sign. The last one, it just didn't include the whole the whole land mass of Point Tupper. Cause there's quite a bit of land that goes down be below be uh Bearhead. And we wanted to make that sign as visible and as large as we possibly could. So anyway, we had, we've had a few modifications and some suggestions that came from the committee. We now do have um uh something else to work with and we'll, you know, we'll move this forward. The, all the quotes are are from the, we have all the quotes in from the the uh the sign manufacturer, who's a local guy in in Lordways area. So uh we're working, you know, together with Vibe and um Florida Lee Signs to be able to get these um uh completed and installed in the spring. The uh with some of the co- consultation that we had with the with our committee, there were a few other concerns that came up. When people are entering into uh uh Point Tupper and they're coming the back way from Port Malcolm Road. It's amazing the number of people who are actually hunting um and uh and shooting guns coming up that way. And when you really think of it, of all the the huge oil tanks and L N G potential that are there with potential stray bullets, you know, going back and forth. We figured that we better get some signage up there that that A lets people know that they're entering a an industrial zone. And and B, and maybe more importantly, is that there is no hunting and and um so we we wanna do that. So the idea is to put some larger uh no hunting signs, but still branded in the same um type of colors and 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 look so they know that where where they're coming from. And also two, probably four by eight industrial zone signs on Port Malcolm Road, right at the border. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see um of those two images, you'll this, that is a sign actually going into Tupper Developments. And it's pretty old and um and it's just um kinda helter-skelter. There's really no brand to it. And there's some really important companies in there like Idol Concrete and um you know, they're still showing the old Richmond Energy Office. But Raw Steel, All Steel, Bearhead L N G Corporate Offices are in there. So what we plan on doing is redoing that sign as well. So it has the same look and feel as the other signs that we're doing. And um.
So yeah, so really what we have, so the original um project in the summer, what we agreed to was a five thousand dollar contribution. Each from Akoa, N S B I, the Cape Britain Partnership and the municipality. So that was a total of twenty thousand. The project so far with the branding refresh and then the two large five by ten signs plus the welcome sign was uh fourteen four seventy, I believe, so just shy of the five thousand. What we would like to do with that remaining five is develop these hunting signs, the industrial zone sign, and replace the signage for Tupper Developments in here. So this last slide here, we'd like to take earmark that last um portion of the of the money to go towards the expense here. Um and then at that point, I think we should have the park covered.
Yeah. So we do have a couple of motions um in that light. One is for the Richmond Municipal Council to approve the Point Tupper Development Committee's recommendation on the branding for Point Tupper Heavy Industrial Park. And the second one is for the Richmond Municipal Council to approve funding for the cost of sign posts and installation by Public Works, which would be approximately twenty-five hundred dollars in material costs. So when we first talked about this, we um.
Wait, now Jeff, is that over and above the five thousand?
Yes, it is, yeah, yeah.
The install part was already agreed to, but it was three signs.
Yeah.
And now there'll be a few more because there'll be the no hunting, the industrial zone ones and the other ones. So it's to add those extra signs.
You asked earlier for the five thousand to go into the no hunting signs and the Tupper industrial refresh. So these are extra signs over and above what you were speaking of?
It's included in the in the amount that we have. So we have enough money for all those signs, what we what we're looking for.
Twenty-five hundred is for?
But for design, more s- more design and production, but not installation. The signs were always to be installed by.
Hundred dollars then, instead of five thousand, these new extra signs?
No, we estimate that all the signs to install all the signs by Public Works, there'd be approximately twenty-five hundred dollars in posts framing the odd piece of plywood for backing.
So it doesn't include anything to do with the signs themselves. The signs are covered under the cost of the project. It's just to have them installed.
But a sign needs a support. So that's part of it. That's I just was just thinking, okay. So you're saying it's twenty-five hundred dollars in supporting these signs, five thousand to make them?
Right.
Okay.
Exactly.
Yeah. We have a question from Deputy Warden.
Yes, Jeff, I'm looking at the land for the branding refresh. I see you're using Point Tupper Heavy Industrial Park, Point Tupper Nova Scotia. Why can't that read Point Tupper Richmond County, Nova Scotia? And I think you referred to a little while ago that on the right-hand side, it's Port Hoxbury Paper. But actually, that paper is in Richmond County.
That's right.
It's called Port Hoxbury. And you know, uh if you want to promote Richmond County, and we say, let's promote our area in Richmond County, and all of a sudden you put.
Can you go back to the uh?
Yeah, so.
Paper and then you have the Point Tupper Nova Scotia instead of uh.
Keep going.
Point Tupper Richmond County.
So that's just an example?
No, keep keep going.
I know it's an example, but it seems to be approved.
The third slide.
That one?
No, one more back. One more back there. We have, that's Richmond County on that. We did that one three or four years ago, right?
That's right.
Sign?
Yeah.
On the left-hand side there, Deputy Warden.
I'm not looking at those. I'm looking at the new proposal.
But I think that one says Richmond County, if I'm correct.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
It's not clear, but yeah.
Yeah, so to answer your an- answer your question, I I don't see any reason why we why we wouldn't do that. I I think it's, you know, that would be a great comment just to bring back to the to the committee.
We would do that, I mean.
Yes. So so the this one I've got up on the screen here now, this is the actual main logo. And then the applications, these are just examples of how it could be used. So whether, you know, the sign, what it would look like on a sign located in the park would be different than what would be in a trade magazine that would be showcased in Toronto versus what would be different on a website. It it can change and you can add Point Tupper or or add, sorry, Richmond County or Nova Scotia or Canada if you need that. It depends on how you're using the local.
No, I'd like to see Richmond County because if it goes like that, like I say, Richmond County is not into the picture whatsoever. It'll be like the Port Hoxbury Paper and actually it's located in Richmond County. I want to refer to the Point Tupper Heavy Industrial Park as being in Richmond County, Nova Scotia.
Yeah, as long as you keep it in Nova Scotia.
To anybody else, but I think it's important to me.
Well, well, the committee.
You're you're my counselor.
I know, I know. No, it's it's true. Well, and maybe we're the application committee, and I know the committee has talked about that, counselor. Where if um if they were going to a trade show uh that's international, they might use the word Nova Scotia. But on a sign that someone is actually in Richmond County and it's a welcome sign, that at that point. But on a sign that someone is actually in Richmond County and it's a welcome sign, that at that point, it would. Might make more sense to say it's the home of Richmond County, so the people, they're they're already there, they know it's Richmond County as they go in. But if you're international and you're trying and you're looking for brand equity, most people that are in Antwerp, Belgium. Probably don't know about Richmond County, but they would know Nova Scotia.
I know exactly what you're saying, but when I go anyplace, they ask me where I'm from, I start from the bottom. I don't start from the top, I say I'm from Petit de Gras, Almeda, Richmond County, K Britton, Nova Scotia, which is part of Canada.
Right.
I don't say I'm from Canada. If you say you're from Canada, you know, John Hicks from Toronto, Ontario. You know, and that's not the way. I know him anyway, but I mean.
No, your po- your point's well taken.
And another question, uh, five, five minutes, Warden, is that you mentioned five thousand dollars, right?
Yes.
That was the, is that the cost for each municipal unit?
Well, it's just us.
Just us in in partnership with the.
So we have, we, the partnership contributed, ACOA contributed, NSBI contributed.
And then there's an additional twenty-five hundred?
For s- for the lumber to help with the additional signs.
Okay.
Councillor, your, your mic.
Would it come for, just, no, I think that's twenty-five hundred, is our portion?
To install the additional signs for the no hunting.
Yeah, but is that shared between all the others too, like is it twenty, not twenty-five hundred each, is it?
It's not shared, um, it, that uh uh initially when we talked about this, the uh the municipality had agreed to. Uh, do the installation.
Okay, but I don't know where the twenty-five hundred comes from.
But we don't have to provide you the twenty-five hundred.
We can do the installation.
You do it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you just.
That was a rough estimate as to what it may, it may cost, you may have the lumber already and and it's, yeah.
I I I thought we'd use some of our five thousand that they didn't use yet to install, but.
Well, it's a good idea.
Okay. Uh, your mic.
No, cause Gilbert and I were gonna go into the woods and cut the lumber ourselves.
Cancel your mic, Deputy Warden. Councillor Bushet?
Thank you for the uh presentation. I guess I agree with James, as you know, that anything goes in Richmond County, it's a Richmond County name and that's it. Uh, as far as the uh no hunting signs, you're very restricted to where you can put those signs. They have to be on your own property. You can't put no hunting signs on John Doe's land down on the other side of your property line. So you you're kinda restricted where you can do those, and I think the proper people to deal with there would be natural resources.
Natural resources, I think you're right.
Yeah, it's uh, because no hunting s- signs means if you put a no hunting sign up on my land, if I put one on my land. I can't even hunt there myself. There's, there's so, there's quite a bit of restriction for that.
Right, okay.
Uh. I guess the twenty-five hundreds kinda took me for a loop too, and then you mentioned Public Works installing the the signs.
Yeah.
So you want our Public Works, we wanna, you're gonna pay, we're gonna pay you twenty-five hundred dollars.
No, no.
And you're gonna give that to our Public Works to install the sites?
No.
No. I, I got the impression you wanted the money at first, but the more I think about it, we'll look after that.
Yeah, you're looking, you're, exactly.
You're just giving us an.
That's gonna be the estimate of the uh of the materials required to install.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think uh first of all is, you know, and and I I have no problem with it, the only problem I have is that. There's nobody here from Public Works, engineer's not here, so we can't donate his time to projects like this. Because I know he's up to his eyeballs in in work now and he doesn't have the staff, as you know. Reduce some of his staff, so I wouldn't want to commit him to anything unless he agrees with that. So I think we'd have to postpone any motions made until he's notified and uh. If he agrees with that, I have no problem then.
Well, the, the motion now is more for just the branding and we'll get them to. Explain exactly what the branding is, so we're all clear on it, that's what the mo- one of the motions is for, first one.
Motion is for funding too, so when there's funding going along with uh with donating our our Public Works labor.
Then I think we should have a public works. You're not speaking of the extra twenty-five hundred here.
So, the first motion is to approve the brand.
Correct.
And the second one, the funding was already. Ag- agree to before, and that's, and that's where we allocated that last portion of that to cover up all these additional sign. What we're looking for is just um. Public Works to help to assist in installing the additional sign. Because the agreement was already there for Public Works to install the first three, and we're just asking if Public Works can install. These additional ones that we've added, the hunting and the.
Okay, but the funding you're talking about is to get the five thousand, cause you, I saw an email from you about getting it.
Yeah, um, yes.
So this motion is just for that, so we'd have to have kind of a third and we'll hold back the Public Works.
Yeah. Another thing I would like to know is, uh, you mentioned signage is being done by uh somebody from Lordways? Alex Fine Signs?
Yeah.
Have you gone out to competition with that uh? Okay, hey, do you mind uh tell me who you went to?
Well, we did it through Vibe, we did it through Vibe.
They were subcontracted through.
So Vibe Com- Vibe Communications or Vibe Design out of Sydney is the um, is the designer of the. Of the, the brand and they went out um and to round out the the project. And found the, the um, the sign manufacturer themselves.
Okay, my problem is, is that I'm an elected official. And where we have three or four different companies in Richmond County to do this, I wanna be assured that all those companies were contacted. If Felix Fine Signs gets it, that's fine, if he's the lowest bidder, that's great, that's, you know, he's in Richmond County. We also have uh other sign makers in Richmond County that have million dollar homes. Is paying a good chunk of taxes to us, so we don't wanna leave them out when it comes to bidding process, okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Kel?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, uh, when you gave the breakdown of who invested in these signs, is there, is there a benefit to the companies that are in Poroxbury? I'm just wondering where they ask to contribute to this project at all, because there is a benefit to them, isn't there? Especially with the signs are gonna have their names on them, who's in the park. Cause right now, we've just had the partnership, you said the partnership, ACOA, uh, NSBI and the county, so. I'm just thinking, like, Poroxbury Paper and all these big companies, they're, they're benefiting by this, why wouldn't they be a partner in paying part of the cost? Even that twenty-five hundred we're talking about for materials to put up these signs?
There's not a lot of benefit to them, uh, the municipality is the, is the biggest benefactor of that park. And potentially, uh, the, the part going forward as far as taking um uh available land and turning it into. Uh, you know, a, a new development or bring a new company in, because essentially those, those other uh. Like the Port Hoxbury Papers and New Stars of the world are really clients of yours, um, they're, they're paying you taxes.
Yeah, but I mean, we're, we're making a sign that indicated they're all in there, so it gives them a benefit, so I'm just wondering if it's something that we could approach them for the twenty-five hundred to put.
Yeah, we, you know, we discussed that and and really decided that um it wasn't really in our best interest to do that. Um, some of these organizations are paying, you know, two, three, four hundred thousand dollars a year to the municipality. What we're trying to do is make that uh park more attractive, so you can get more business.
Yeah, but they're paying that in taxes, not, not in service, just yeah, and taking everybody else, yeah, so, anyway, just a thought.
Councillor Bushet?
Thank you, Warden Marshall. Uh, I think getting back to what Alvin is saying, I think the only benefit to anybody in there would be somebody like uh. Straight Supplies, if somebody's coming in to build new, there the people are gonna sell.
Yeah.
The mill and those people are already there to establish businesses, they're not to go anywhere.
Finished councillor Bushet, councillor McLean?
Um, I, I do think we're missing the boat a little bit, because I do agree that we are uh huge beneficiaries of of tax dollars. That help us operate and I think if we can play a small part in supporting that process by. Um, prettying up the signs and making Point Tupper more presentable in any way that we can, this is a very, very small price to pay for. Something that could potentially pay off in in such a large manner, so um as far as supporting the motions that were presented tonight. They will all receive my support and if there's um any way that there are shortcomings, if we need to take another look at. With regards to spending a few extra dollars on, on making things more presentable, then I'm in favor of that also.
Okay, let's um, so Vibe received the contract to develop this branding. Let's be clear on what the branding is, this is not what's considered branding. That's considered branding there, isn't it?
That's the logo.
Yeah, that's the, that's the logo.
So, the mo- the, the motion for accepting the recommendation on the branding is on this?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, all the other.
So how many, how many signs, so Vibe was hired to get this branding done, they went out and hired. Uh, another company.
Cause they couldn't do, they couldn't do the sign.
To do the manufacturing part.
So we're talking two signs of five by ten?
Yeah.
And they're going to be at each end of the park?
Yeah.
Point, Port, Port Malcolm Road and the.
Most of the traffic's gonna be coming up from um.
Highway four?
Highway four, so um as you come up to that corner where you would turn right to go to Straight Supplies or um. Uh, Port Hoxbury Paper, there would be one, one up there and then one on the other side of um. Uh, of Tupper Developments, um, probably past where the re- the wood receiving is. Just so, just so people are out, aren't parking their car off the side of the road before they're standing there looking at a sign. Or looking through their windshield and having all the pulp trucks fly by them, so just probably at a safety, just getting them past that um, that area.
So that'll be, there's gonna be a welcome sign, which is gonna be now where the Richmond County sign is. And then there's gonna be a sign coming into Port Malcolm Road and a sign just past the Scale House.
That's right.
Port Hoxbury Paper.
Yeah.
Those two signs are not in this presentation, we just got them very, very late, just before this started, so we don't have them in here, but. They have maps and their directional signage, like, it'll show you.
Okay, so we'd need, we'd need a copy though of these, it's kinda hard to make a motion. Maybe we can make a motion on the branding part, but on the actual signage, uh, mind you, it seems there's fourteen thousand dollars already been spent. Are going to be spent to develop these three signs.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so where are we at now, Vibes' contract was for a third of that?
They.
Vib- no, sorry, what are you asking?
Vibe, Vibe has been paid to do some work.
Yeah, nobody's been paid anything yet.
Okay, they're not paid yet, okay.
Yeah.
So is everyone okay with this? Now, this is not the actual sign, so it's kinda hard.
This is the brand.
We like the color, or do we? We like the color, we like the wording, but it's a little tough to make.
So this is the brand, the motion is to approve the brand.
For the brand?
Yes.
But that's still not.
And then this brand will be used in a bunch of different applications.
Should this, would this be going back to the committee to decide the actual end copy of, of each sign?
Yes, the committee has been um informed through every step of the process.
Okay, but they will still.
Yeah.
Make a decision on the new sign.
Yeah, that's right.
So where did you come up with the under fifteen thousand, you think Vibes and Alex Fine Signs? The cost to do all that work is just under fifteen?
That was the lowest.
Yeah, yeah.
The lowest quote. That's including Vibes' cost, yeah.
That's, that's including their cost.
That's only for three signs.
Yeah.
But these land for sale signs are the extras, five thousand?
That was all identified by the committee, that they needed these additional pieces, which we thought would be earmarked.
Get of those? So the five thousand's gonna be a couple of extra of these land for sale signs?
It'll be a little bit more design work and then it will be um two large industrial zone and entering an industrial zone. Um, uh, sign, and then there'll be four smaller um, uh, no hunting signs. And then there'll be the redo of the sign that's going into Tupper Developments.
So where are the land for sale signs in that that you showed us?
That's already included in the original.
That's all.
Okay, so.
With the three larger ones.
Yeah.
Okay, 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 so how many land for sale ones are we getting?
Uh, sixteen.
Okay. And then four no hunting signs. And entering heavy industrial zone, two of those will be later.
There's been a lot of work on the brand itself, like they've met with the committee, Vibe has come in and and worked through sort of the messaging. What do they wanted to convey and and, you know, there's been quite a number of meetings that have happened since last summer. Um, or since last spring, really, and and this is what they've arrived at after multiple reiterations and going back and forth with the committee. And the design firm.
Okay. Okay, does someone wanna make a motion and it's just to approve the brand? Keep in mind, we're a twenty-five percent.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Bushet?
When you're putting no hunting zone uh signs up, you're gonna have to put a major sign there saying why. Here's the, the uh Point Tupper Heavy Industrial Park and you're gonna have to put on that sign. This is a no hunting zone.
Right.
From this point.
Exactly.
So you may have to move that big sign further down the road from the, from the area. Lantern force will tell you what the ballistics are on the rifle, so you might have to go that distance.
But he's got the bullets that go back and forth, he said. Going back and forth, I heard him say.
Yep. They only go one way if you're a good shot.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve this brand, it's been moved by councillor Bushet. Richmond County Council approved the Point Tupper Development Committee's recommendation for the Point Tupper Heavy Industrial Park branding. It's been seconded by councillor McLean on discussion. Questions call, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, okay, so we're okay with that part. Now, you want us to approve funding to design, produce and install the no hunting signs, but. That is already within this twenty thousand dollar figure anyway, we've given you the five thousand.
Just the install.
It's just the, it, yes, it's just.
But it says to.
Actually, one clar-.
To design.
One clarification is that there has been, there has been a, a modification of what you have in your package. And what's on here, we, we pulled that out because we realized after going back that there was more money. There was still money in the budget, so we didn't need that extra twenty-five hundred, so we're not asking for the twenty-five hundred. Um.
Oh, you're not getting it?
We're not asking for it.
We'll, we'll look after that. Yeah, okay, but your motion is to approve funding to design, produce, install, no hunting signs, industrial zone signs.
No, we're sorry, we, we've.
But that's in the twenty thousand dollar budget already.
I'm sorry, we, we have pulled that. The.
Oh.
That motion is different than what you have, the motion is now to approve funding for the cost of the signpost and installation by Public Works. Which is approximately twenty-five hundred dollars.
We don't even have to approve that, if we're gonna look after that.
Yeah.
We can do that in-house, so we don't need a motion for that. So you're gonna use, you don't need a motion now to get the twenty, the five thousand?
That's correct.
You've gotten the five, five thousand?
Yeah.
Cause I saw the email that went through, but.
Yeah, we've, we found the, we found that money.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jeff and Carla? By Jason. We voted. Yes, I saw your hand. You're starting to make meat out. Okay. Okay, so, thank you Jeff and Carla, you guys have anything else to say?
No, no, no.
Very much.
Thank you.
So uh, we will need, we'd like to have electronic copies of the final design. Of the sign before it does go to printing or, we'd like to see that.
Okay.
Yeah.
In case we realize it's, you know, we're only a twenty-five percent funding partner, but I think we'd like to see to ensure, you know, the Richmond County.
Do you wanna do that through the, your committee members or do you want us to come back?
But I think all councillors should be emailed as well.
Okay.
I'll get to see it, but we should all see it.
I can send it to you, Brian, for the last rack. I can send it to you, Brian, for the last draft we just received lately.
Yeah. And, yeah, on the local sign, but Nova Scotia's gotta be on your email branding or your website branding, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, for sure. Okay. Thank you both. Thank you. Okay, on to item five, which is correspondence. And we have four pieces that are for information purposes. Uh, I wanna bring your attention to the Nova Scotia Fisheries and Agriculture, the proposed amendment uh, to a license or lease. Uh, we think that, or I think, should that not go to the Inshore Fishermen's? Association? Uh, for them, the Richmond County Inshore Fishermen's?
I think, Brian, uh, a copy of that letter presented to the Inshore Fishermen's Association. The Inshore Fishermen's Association will notify the Department of Fisheries and ask them when they're holding a public meeting. Because they have to hold a public meeting in order to, uh, change that lease over there. They've already got one lease and they wanna change the location of it. But in order to do that, they have to go to a public meeting with that. So.
Okay, so we're getting that just for information purposes, but?
Yeah.
So the Richmond Inshore Fisherman?
To just pass it on to the Richmond County Inshore Fishermen's.
Can we, so do that? We'll get a motion to do that then? You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so that's that one. The other one from, uh, Transportation is just for information sake. On a road, I guess, in your area, Councilor Martel? And then the Gillis Point Lighthouse was another one. And a thank you from St. Martha's Regional Hospital Foundation, but it just says hospital there. That's been designated by the federal.
So why are they, like, are they just giving us a heads up that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Losing a piece of paper here. Well, I thought the address was there. Yeah, but it's only for information anyway.
Yeah.
And the federal ministers let the province know. Okay, on to the action required, which is the, uh, medical first responder that came from our fire services somewhat coordinator, uh, the C A O. Wanna speak to that?
This, um, this was the local, uh?
Just gonna put your mic down. I don't know if I get feedback if we do.
This was the local, uh, firefighters, uh, association. They have concerns that, uh, every three years, there's requalifications uh, for a first responder, uh, medical training. And it's a forty hour, uh, course. And their concern is that there isn't, uh, sufficient, um, resources available for the training uh, during that three-year period. They'd have to go a whole full, uh, three years and then subject themselves to a forty hour, uh, training. Um, there is, uh, the St. John Ambulance and, uh, E H S, uh, training available, but it costs a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty dollars per student. Active paramedics, uh, can put on six modules over three years. Uh, four to five hours each module, which is a much better and more appropriate training module over the three years. And it doesn't cost anything to, uh, to the local firefighters. So the suggestion here, uh, from the, the local firefighters is that council, uh, endorse sending a letter to, um, um, municipal, uh, or the, uh, the council representatives on the Fire Services Committee, uh, request additional teaching resources in this area over the next three years. So that the local firefighters can subject themselves to just six modules and not taking a whole forty hour week at the end of every three years. So we'd be looking for council's approval to, uh, uh, to lobby for, um, uh, additional training resources over the three-year period.
And I'll make a motion. If we accept the recommendation with the Fire Services Coordinator for Richmond, then, uh, that's exactly what we do.
So, and, and that's requesting additional teaching resources in this area?
In these areas, yeah.
Who'd we send that to? Is that E H S? Oh, he sent it, but who, okay. Yeah. We're gonna make representation to E H S. Oh, he already did. Okay, so?
What we wanna do is just follow up and, uh, send, make that motion and send to E H S for the recommendation that he's already talked about.
So we'll get a letter written up, uh, expressing our concerns, I guess, over this situation. And, uh, we'll contact Raymond to see exactly who would E H S send it to. You okay with that?
There is, is if we can set it up with the, E H S guys now, get some instructions from them, we can just continue along without disrupting any services. And we don't have to spend a lot of money by sending a bunch of people.
To do the full course?
And he had, uh, he had sent a long contact for us to send it to, so.
They're already qualified.
They just need to be requalified.
Yeah. Yeah. I think the issue is they couldn't get somebody to E H S. There's not many doing the training.
That's right.
But you know, we have an R C F D officer here in there that was a paramedic for these services.
Yes.
Need a motion for this or?
Yeah, there's an action required. So we'll make a motion and we'll send it on the last page. Raymond has the number there.
Yeah.
It's been, it's been moved. It's been moved and seconded, uh, that we send a letter to, um, contact person that Raymond has supplied here uh, at E H S concerning, with our concerns, I guess, about the lack of training, uh, for our firefighters to, uh, continue with these modules, I guess, or have their modules upgraded. It's been moved and seconded on discussion. Questions called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Onto our next item, which is grants, uh. I would like to have the, uh, the items added grants as well. So all of the grants are one for five hundred dollars out of District Three. Activity for St. Louis, uh, Catholic Women's League. The next one is, uh, five hundred dollars out of District Four for the River of Wishwa Seniors Fifty Plus Club out of the activity money. The third one, uh, is the East, uh, Richmond ATV Riders out of Municipal District Four for seven hundred. That's an infrastructure grant, right? Wait now, I, I'm wondering if we can add the other two. The other three. But there's two, uh, Councilor Martel has one for Acadia Ville out of, uh, District Activity Fund District Two for one thousand dollars. And I have one for the West Bay Pastorial Church of the Municipal District Activity Fund District Three for a thousand. And we added one this evening for South, South Mountain Armigoll Community Association out of Municipal District Three and Four. Uh, a fifty-fifty split for five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. I believe all yous were emailing that one this evening. Uh, so we'll make a motion for the six. Okay, so there's a motion for the six grants. Is there a seconder? It's been moved by Councilor Boucher and seconded by Councilor Martel on discussion. Questions called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Moving on to item six, which is a review of the checks. You have the list of the checks for December twenty seventeen. If you have any questions, you can email the C A O or myself. Uh, items added, we have already dealt with that. Moving on to the fifty-minute question period. If there's any questions from the gallery. If not, we'll be going in camera this evening. And some of the items, we have two property transactions and one to do with personnel. So we'll be going in camera this evening to discuss those three items. The, the mileage at large for members at large is actually in our policy. So we don't, we wouldn't be discussing that in camera, but that's already in our policy where they get it. So Yvonne's gonna look after that. So it saves us. So we'll go in camera in a couple of minutes, okay? I asked. Nobody's coming up yet. Anybody have questions from the gallery? Okay, been a motion to go in camera. Seconder? Second it. On discussion? Questions called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. We'll go in camera in three or four minutes. Uh, we have two motions coming out of our in-camera session. Councilor Martel?
Okay, I moved that, uh, the committee recommend the council to accept the recommendation of the vested property clerk and that lot ten A located in the industrial park in Lennox Passage be sold to Blair Sampson and Kyle Sampson at the appraised value to be determined by a market value appraisal.
We want the addition of? Gonna leave it? Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Martel. Thought we hadn't done that. So you wanna add it in there? You want to amend that motion? So we need a motion to amend. We don't have a seconder yet. We want to add?
All related costs.
Yeah. The applicable H S T, the, uh, appraisal fee, the migration cost. It's on the next one, but we wanted the two of them the same. Okay. Alvin, you want that amendment? You're okay with that?
Yeah.
We'll vote on that amendment? Question on the amendment? All in favor, put your right hand. Deputy Ward?
Okay, I'd like to.
No, no, wait, no, no, on the amendment. Okay, so we, we, whoa, 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 we voted on the amendment. The amendment's passed. So now just been the mover for the primary motion, seconder. Uh, on the motion for selling lot ten A with all the related costs included. Questions been called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That motion's carried. Deputy Warden?
Okay, next lot, I moved that the, uh, committee recommend the council to accept a recommendation of the vested property clerk and sell property identified as assessment number oh nine six one four eight five to Mister Norman Fugere at the appraised value plus applicable H and, uh, H S T to be determined by a market value appraisal. And further move that all, uh, related costs associated with the purchase be included. I make that form from?
Okay, with one little change. You read that? Yeah, it's, it's, uh, four eight five zero or, uh?
Oh nine six one four eight five, zero.
Zero. Yeah, you hadn't said the zero, okay.
Okay, zero.
It's been moved?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. But it's all applicable costs you put there?
All applicable costs associated with the property. Yeah. All associate costs related to the purchase. I'm not going there with all that.
But the, the addition to that is the, the, that we prepare and execute a release and indemnity?
Yeah, you can include that if you want, yeah.
We're gonna add that, you know, Councilor Martel?
On, on, uh, clarification, um, you've said, it says in the motion that it's going to, uh, Norman Fugere, but isn't it going to a company? We, we can't really sell real estate to an individual? I think they have a company name? Yeah, I think you, you have to amend that motion to put in the company name and not the individual because it won't stand for, we're not allowed to do that?
Why can't you sell an individual?
Not allowed.
Yeah, but we, we put the names in the first one. We didn't put a company.
M J Investments.
M J is the second one, but the first one, so we have the name.
Cause we're selling it to a company to develop it, so it has to be. My daughter has to be, uh?
I didn't think it mattered. M J Investments? Okay. We'll make that change.
So moved?
So it's been moved by Counselor, by Deputy Warden, uh, I asked. And seconded by Councilor Martel on discussion.
Question?
Questions called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilor Boucher, seconded by Councilor Martel. On discussion? Questions called. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried.